All right, thank you everybody for being here. Welcome to the Belvidere City Council Committee of the whole meeting of June 10th, 2024. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Flurry. Flurry is absent. Frank.
Here.
Freeman. Freeman is absent. Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. We will go move to public comment. I have Mr. Ron Wilholt. Did I get that right, Ron? All right. If you don't mind, come on up and in front of the microphone. Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for coming out this evening.
You're welcome. Hi, everybody. Fellow Belviderians. My name is Ron Wilholt. I've been here living in Belvidere for the last 18 years. I live over on the first ward, right across from Freed Park. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that area, but it is a flood plain over there. And I've noticed over the years, a lack of interest in cleaning the park up as far as the drainage and the spillways. And it just gets worse and worse every year. So I just wanted to bring that to the city's attention. And hopefully something can get done. It can be dredged out or something. That's what I have.
All right. Well, thank you, Ron. I appreciate you coming here and we'll.
I have some pictures if they want to look at them.
Sure. Take them. Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll follow up and did I have your number here?
I do have my phone number. Do I?
Uh, no. Do you mind? Would you mind putting that on there for me, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good one.
All right, moving to public forum, we have none here this evening. Reports of officers, board, and special committees. Item A, recognition of Police Officer Michelle Schwartz. I would ask Chief Woody if he would come up here. Hi, Chief. Thank you.
I'd just like to start off by thanking the council for allowing us this few minutes to recognize Officer Schwartz and just bring to your attention some of the many quality things that she's done to make our community better. With that, I will ask the mayor to come up.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, you know, I fully am aware that Officer Schwartz had received an award. And it was the Remarkable Woman Award for WIFR. And with that being said, of course, she is remarkable. I work with a lot of remarkable women as well, but it's nice to have Michelle in our public safety, representing our police department. And she certainly deserves this award as well. The city of Belvidere thought that we should do something that would honor Michelle. It's not every day that somebody gets recognized. I think she did receive a $1,000 award to donate, and she donated that to the food pantry. So, but I am grateful to Michelle. She represents for our police department. She represents, there are many good officers as well, but she represents all of the good officers that we have, as well as herself. I think she provides selfless, a selfless attention to the community, helps people that are less fortunate than we are, and people that are in need. So with that being said, I wanted to turn this back over to Chief Woody. I know that the city has a plaque to present to Michelle, Officer Schwartz, but I do think that it would be appropriate that Chief Woody present this, so.
So I'm eager to get to the presentation, but the mayor and I thought it prudent that Amanda Mill, the director for the Health Department, come up and say a few words on behalf of not only the Health Department, but the Behavioral Task Force as well. So if I could have you come up, please?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda Mill with the Boone County Health Department, but I also chair the Boone County Behavioral Health Task Force. And in 2017, the decades-long neglect of the mental health challenges across the nation, and also the challenges faced by the decades-long opioid epidemic, this community finally came together and stood up and said, "We're not going to keep allowing this to happen. We're not going to keep waiting for people to get the care that they're not getting and get linked to the services that they don't know are out there and end up spending time after time within the justice system when that's not a way for them to live healthy, productive lives." And that extends way beyond what the Health Department is able to do. We don't do that alone. There are 30-plus partners that sit at that task force table. And in 2021, we received the grant that allowed us to hire the community law enforcement officer. And Michelle has more than filled those shoes. She represents the connection between the justice system and the healthcare and social service system. She represents a leadership role within our core team. And we have members of our task force and the core team that are here tonight to support and honor her. So I would ask the core team members and the task force members just to stand briefly to be recognized because there are quite a few of you in the, in the audience tonight. Thank you. And the work that we do responding and connecting and linking and helping people live more sustainable, healthy lives wouldn't be possible without that police officer role and without Michelle's leadership in that role. It has been an honor and a pleasure to work with her and have her step into that role and bring us forward. There are people who are alive tonight because of her, and there are many people who are not with us anymore, who should be honored and remembered as folks whose memories will always live with us as we continue to do this important work. 54,000 people in the county and a large number of those folks in the city of Belvidere benefit from the services that are provided. And it is an honor and a privilege to work with Officer Schwartz, and I'm thrilled to be a part of this recognition celebration. Thank you for having me.
Okay. So Michelle was drawn to service of others at a young age. She proceeded to get her bachelor's degree of arts and human services from Judson College. Now, just bear with me, this is only like six or seven pages, so. Then she went on to become a drug and alcohol counselor until she followed her calling into law enforcement. In 2002, Michelle was hired as a Belvidere police officer, and over the 22, last 22 years, Michelle has always gone out of her way to find services for those who needed them. She was constantly trying to find ways to improve community relations between our citizens and the police department. While on patrol, Michelle came up with the idea of badges with books, where she would get donated kids' books, organize them, put them into crates, put them in the back of squad cars. So that way, when officers came upon some kids, they could hand these books out to not only engage the kids, but also the parents. This program is still a hit today, and Michelle hands out books during Halloween and Christmas. When the COSAT position came open, Michelle's peers seemed to think that she was a shoo-in for the position, given her background. Michelle was selected, and she and the core team have made great strides to make the core program the gold standard. Most recently, Michelle was recognized by Channel 17 for her contributions to community service. She competed against other remarkable women in the state and eventually was picked by the selection committee based on her many contributions. Michelle won $1,000 for charity of her choice and gave the money to empower Boone. Michelle was flown out to Los Angeles, where she competed against other nationally-selected remarkable women. Michelle may not have brought home the national title, but the city of Belvidere, Boone County Health Department, Boone County Behavioral Task Force, and Belvidere Police Department wanted to make sure she knew how much we appreciate the service she has provided to our community. So I would like to go ahead and present Michelle with this Community Service Award in honor and recognition of your passion, devotion, and selfless service to the citizens of Belvidere and Boone County. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone. Just want to give several thanks to a lot of people that are here. First of all and foremost, Amanda, thank you the most for your vision and your passion to bring the behavioral health and the core team to Belvidere. And her sidekick, Amy, without you guys, I would not be standing here at all. Deputy Chief Wallace, thank you for letting me come into your office and saying, "I have an idea," and letting me run with it. Tim, for being my wingman for, "I have an idea." Thank you to every, my friends, family that are here. The Salt House, Crystal, thank you for letting me take your girls and teaching them how to serve the community. And Talia and Nia, thank you for wanting to come with me all the time. To all my friends, families, coworkers, the core team, I'm not who I am without all of you. I could not be here and do the things that I do without, you guys make me look good. All your words of appreciation really make, words are hard, all your words of appreciation really motivate me to be even better. And lastly, thank you to the city council for voting this in two years ago. I'm grateful for the, the chances you've given me to showcase my skills. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item one, building, planning, zoning, unfinished business. We don't have any this evening. Moving to the next page, we have building, building, planning, zoning, new business. Item A, building, planning, building and zoning update. Ms. Delrose, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. In May, there is three cases at Plan Commission, variance for self-storage units that was approved, the replac for Hills, and the special use on the corner of 76 and State Street. I'll let her celebrate out there. She deserves it. Nah, tomorrow at Plan Commission, there are two cases on the agenda. Project UConn, the Walmart cold storage distribution center is amending their special use regarding light fixtures and a newly created lot to serve ComEd. And then there is the subdivision plat to go along with the newly created lot to serve ComEd. Tanner Industries will be moving forward with an annexation and rezoning. That has been delayed a month while the annexation agreement gets ironed out and then will be submitted to the council for review. Obviously, with the weather breaking, inspectors are kicking up, so there was the final inspection at the truck stop, and then staff cleaned up some old ones lingering from last year on smaller projects. Zoning letters are still moving forward, addressing, the commission did not meet, but I'm happy to announce the walkthrough timebooks that Commissioner Dubberfuel created are still selling very good, so hopefully we will have enough money to do the property maintenance grants again. Heritage Days is occupying a lot of time, just finalizing schedules. Tie-dyed 105 t-shirts this weekend, so I kind of got the Children of the Corn fingernails going on. City Hall float, Facebook, stuff like that. Obviously, the comp plan was adopted and working with JIS to update the website on everything. And then the downtown facade grant letters went out. I did, two applications have been received so far. Staff presented at the high school for their environmental science class. That's a highlight of the year for me. I love doing that. And then staff has been assisting the Health Department in a small part of the Boone County Wellness Care Planning. So that is that.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Delrose? Alderman Burnham?
Thank you, Mayor. So Heritage Days, will there be an effort made to make sure the laser light show and foam party is not as loud as last year?
I will talk to the DJ about the sound level.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Gina. Moving to item B, we have before you a memo in the packet dated June 5th, 2024, from Ms. Delrose regarding the extension request for case 2023-13. That is request a one-year extension for indoor commercial entertainment. Ms. Delrose?
I will say the applicant is here as well, Mr. Heidner, but this is for the May's Lounge, going next door to the Aroma Hill dispensary. It was, it appears that it was multiple factors. One, they wanted to get the truck stop up and running, you know, can't have too many projects going on at a time and have them be successful. And the other, it, they were approached by various people that were considering buying the business, so until that was determined, there was also a delay. Both items have been resolved and they are ready to move forward now.
Okay. The requested motion would be a motion to approve a one-year extension to the special grant used, to the special use granted per ordinance 628H at 1868 Crystal Parkway. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, thank you. And a second by Alderwoman Mulhouse, thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we have item C as well in your packet, a memo dated June 5th, 2024, from Ms. Delrose regarding an extension request for case 2021-09, that being Casey's retail company requesting a one-year extension for the indoor commercial entertainment special use, ordinance 536H. Ms. Delrose?
Yep. So this is asking for the extension for a different reason. And again, the applicant is here if there's questions. Casey's has decided to move forward. They have submitted to the Illinois Gaming Board. For those that don't know, the Illinois Gaming Board does not consider applications in the order that they are received. Some are reviewed the month they get received, some are reviewed a year and a half later. So right now, Casey is at the mercy of the gaming board review time, so it is out of their control as to when this moves forward.
With that being said, I would ask for a motion to approve a one-year extension to the special use granted per ordinance 536H at 425 Beloit Road. If I could have, motion by Alderwoman Mulhouse, thank you. And a second from Alderman McGee, thank you both. Any questions regarding the request? Alderman Snow?
And just out of curiosity, obviously, this case was brought up in 2021, and we must have given several extensions to this already. Is that correct?
Yes, there was a previous extension because I think at that point Casey's was considering whether or not they wanted to move forward, and then they decided another at the gaming board. If I am incorrect, please let me know. Nope, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve a one-year extension to the special use grant granted per ordinance 536 at 425 Beloit Road, which involves Casey's retail, retail company. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we have item D, a reappointment of Carl Ganevoo to the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission. In your packet from me regarding Mr. Ganevoo, his interest, he had penned me a letter, which is in the attached, in the attachment. He's interested in serving. I will say this about Carl. I think he provides a lot to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He's, I don't think hardly ever is absent. He always has great questions and he pays attention to what is being voted on and what is being approved by the commission. So certainly glad from my, from my part, certainly glad to have him want to re-up and am grateful that he has done that. So the motion would be for, this is comprised, the members are seven members, each serving a five-year term. Carl is serving a term that expires in May and has agreed to serve to another five-year term ending in 2029. The motion requested would be a motion to consent, consent to and approve the appointment of Mr. Carl Ganevoo, Ganevoo to the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission, four or five-year term ending in May of 2029. If I could have a motion? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Frank, thank you both. Any questions, any comment about the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. We also have here a memo dated June 5th from me, the appointment of Natalie Monahan, that being an appointment to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission, which is comprised of seven members, each serving a three-year term. Ms. Monahan is requesting to fill a vacant seat with a term ending on April 30th of 2027. She has experience with researching historical documents and organizing events and fundraisers. With that being said, I would request a motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Mrs. Natalie Monahan to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending in April 30th of 2027. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, and a second. Second by Alderman Albertini. Thank you both. I will mention again that it's very difficult to have people take time out of their schedule. Everybody's busy these days. It seems to get busier maybe every year, but I certainly appreciate when we get an offer of good help. And in this case, I believe that we do have, so I appreciate Ms. Mrs. Monahan for putting in for an appointment to this seat. So we have a motion and a second if there's any other discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we have item F, would be the reappointment of Dawn Brooks to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Committee, Commission, excuse me. In your packet is a memo from me, that is a Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission, again, serving a three-year term ending on April 30th, 2027. Ms. Brooke has experience with organizing events and fundraisers, as well as researching information for the commission. The requested motion would be a motion to consent to approve the appointment of Mrs. Dawn Brooks to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending in April 30th, 2027. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. Any question, any comments? The same goes for Dawn, that we have obviously appointments that we have, that we want to fill, and we want people that have an interest in whatever opening there is, and I'm grateful that we have Dawn and Natalie and Carl, as well as the two other individuals that we'll get to here in a minute. Without them, it's pretty hard to conduct business. So with that being said, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any comments or questions regarding the motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And then item G would be the appointment of Lisa Kumero to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission. In your packet is a letter, again, from myself, dated June 5th, the appointment of Lisa Kumero, the Belvidere, again, the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission, which each serve in a three-year term. So Lisa's requesting, we have a vacant term, a vacant seat, that term ending April 30th of 2025. This appointment will be a motion to consent to approve the appointment of Ms. Lisa Kumero to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for the vacated three-year term, which ends April 30th, 2025. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. And a second. Second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you. Any questions regarding, or any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Motion passed, thank you. And item H. Is the appointment of David Kumero to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission. In your packet, again, uh, memo from myself dated June 5th regarding the appointment of David Kumero, and, uh, this is, again, Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission serve, uh, with each serving a three-year term. Uh, this appointment is for the term which ends April 30th, uh, 2027. Um, Mr. Kumero has experience with restoring antiques and maintaining a landmark residence, and I would request a motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Mr. David Kumero to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending in April 30th, 2027. If I could have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderman Snow, thank you, second by Alderman Albertini, thank you. Uh, any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. Um, and I do believe Gina, that, uh, both Dawn and David served. Uh, did they serve, uh, they have served in capacity with the city prior, correct?
Yes, Lisa and David both served in the past. They've hosted events and they've, uh, helped give lectures on how to properly restore items in your house, on historic homes. Um, during COVID, uh, there were, um, health concerns due to some things and they stepped down and now they're ready to serve again.
Yeah, well, it's nice to have them back. All right, uh, we have a motion on the floor, uh, all, and a second, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. All right, moving to item three, Public Works, unfinished business. We have none. Item four, Public Works, new business. Item A, Public Works Department update, uh, Public Works Director Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, update for tonight, Newburgh Road, uh, construction project is nearing completion. Uh, the bituminus has been put down. Uh, contractor is finishing up the aggregate shoulders and he's got some restoration and seeding work to do. Once that's done and the pavement striping, and then that project will be complete and traffic will be back to normal. And that's the only update I have for tonight's meeting.
Okay. If anybody has any questions for Mr. Anderson regarding that update or anything else that they may want to talk about, uh, feel free. Nice of me to volunteer you, isn't it? All right, uh, moving on, item B, uh, we have, we have Alderwoman Natalie Mohal with a sewer backup at 120 West Boone Street. Um, I actually, I know that, uh, Alderwoman Mohal had asked, um, at one point to be on the agenda in the past, and I think maybe she may want to discuss this a little bit fur- further. I think, uh, we would want to know what that entails, and if you would be so kind, uh, certainly feel free. You can sit there or you can come to the podium. It's up to you. That's fine, sure.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, as I spoke at Public Comment last week, and I passed around, um, my billing from RotoRooter, um, last, uh, Thanksgiving, we had, um, a pretty severe sewer backup that covered our entire basement, and, um, they did come out and start the cleanup. Actually, they unclogged it first, um, I believe it was the day before Thanksgiving, but we had to wait until the following, I, I believe it was the following Monday for them to come out and, um, actually clean it up. So we had to cancel, um, Thanksgiving, and that was in our house for a few days, um, before that cleanup was actually completed. And, um, the total amount, it was two separate jobs, actually, one for the actual RotoRootering, and then for the, um, team to come on, come in and do the actual cleanup. So there were two invoices, one for $2,002.74 and another one for $648.50, for a total of 285124, both of which have been, um, paid. Um, they did, um, provide a camera, um, photograph of the pipe that was broken, um, along the terrace side, and, um, I was in communication with Brent at the time that this was happening, and they did come out when weather allowed, um, and it has been, um, completely repaired. I believe they replaced a whole section of the pipe, if I'm not mistaken. He can, um, speak to that better than I can, but the city did end up pulling the pipe out and repairing it. If anyone has any questions, if I can't answer them, I will, or else maybe some might have questions for Brent.
Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, does anybody have any questions regarding, um, regarding the request in the packet? Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. So this was on the terrace side? And was there, and was it submitted to the city for insurance, or?
It was, and insurance denied it. We did go through that process already, probably a couple months ago, but they did. Sarah, help me with that.
I'm just trying to understand if insurance denied it, and if, if we agree to this, this will open up a big box of people coming in and saying, well, it's a precedent, you paid that.
There already has been a precedent to that, and from what I understand is that insurance almost always denies these claims, is what I've been told.
I would, uh, defer to the legal counsel. I know that, um, we have had some discussions, uh, regarding what, um, that potentially entails. I know that, uh, in the past, they have had, we have had individuals that have come before the city council, um, for a long, long time, uh, at different times. And, uh, but I do know that there is a protocol or there is a, um, a best policy regarding that. It hasn't always been followed, but, uh, the city attorney, I would ask him if he wanted to make any comments regarding, obviously regarding, uh, the legality of, uh, what we do here and the long-reaching effects. It certainly is a council decision, but, um, I know we have operated under protocol.
So I did have a conversation with Alderman Mulholland, so she knows what's coming out of my mouth already. Um, and I feel a little bit like a broken record. Um, mostly Aldermen on this council are pretty familiar with what I'm about to say. This comes up a few times a year, um, where we have, and it can be in a variety of different circumstances. It doesn't matter what kind it is, whether it's a, somebody tripping on a sidewalk or a backup or what have you, they have a claim against the city that they want to make for that tort, for that damage. Um, and we carry insurance for that. And so that is always submitted to the insurance company. The city has at its disposal a statute that was passed decades ago by the General Assembly called the Illinois Tort Immunity Act. It provides just that immunity for governmental agencies for most torts. Um, and there's exceptions to it, and it's a very long statute, it's very convoluted, but the general rule is, uh, we're not liable, the taxpayer's not liable just because somebody suffers a damage, unless there's some extenuating circumstance. Our insurance company looks into each claim, and if they believe that it falls under the Tort Immunity Act or some other defense that the city might have, yes, they will deny that claim, appropriately so. Um, when people come to the city council and ask the council then to ignore the decision of the insurance company and pay out the claim, it puts the council in a very large trick box. Um, first of all, our insurance company and their attorneys, or at least their claims of justice, have looked at and already determined that they believe that we have a defense against the claim under the Tort Immunity Act. In other words, under state statute, we should not be using taxpayer dollars to pay for these damages. Um, the second trick box it puts us into is if the city goes ahead and says, well, we understand that insurance company denied the claim, but we want to pay this to help out our constituent, and pays that out of the general fund, we cannot go back after the insurance company for it. We've essentially paid for the insurance and we're paying the claim. The option that the resident has, of course, would to seek other legal remedies to force the insurance company to try and, and take, deal with the claim and see where it happens, where it goes after that. Um, if there was a determination by a court or somebody else in the future, an arbitrary, but usually a court, that the city was liable, then the insurance company would pay that claim, not the city. But if we pay the claim now, it never gets, happens, and it'll come out of the general fund and, well, pay the insurance company and pay the claimant. Um, so my advice has always been, the city council is not obligated to, nor necessarily should it pay claims such as this until they run their course fully through the insurance process. Have they always listened to me? No. But, uh, it's been kind of hit or miss.
All right, uh, all right, uh, Alderman Snow?
And did you submit this to your homeowner's insurer?
I did submit it, and, um, they denied it because it was on the city side and they think, and I believe this is what they said, that it was the tree roots that might have caused the hole in the pipe. Um, also, this is not the first time this has happened from this exact same section of sewer pipe, and back then, again, I don't want, I have no intention of throwing anyone under the bus, but RotoRooter did communicate with, um, a city employee, um, who is no longer with the city anymore, and I thought it would have been taken care of then. It was not. I'm a little wiser now. I should have followed up then, but I didn't, but it was, the hole has been there. It didn't magically, you know, repair itself unfortunately. Um, but yes, this is not the first time, and, and we ate the cost on, on that one as well.
Alderman Snow?
So, as a city attorney, I guess I would address this question. So what would the next step, um, in getting this arbitrated or litigated to somebody who makes a decision, um, beyond the insurance company?
I believe you're unintentionally asking me to give legal advice to somebody that may have a claim against the city. I cannot do that. That balls in the claimants' court, though.
Yeah. Mr. Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. If we were to approve this, we'd be leaving ourselves open to an onslaught of other people going, well, you've already done this. I don't understand why I can't be reimbursed. Is this a fact?
There has been an onslaught of these cases that come in from time to time, yes. And, and whether you deny it or approve it, there's going to be people that are going to come and ask for that help. Um, whether this will encourage more people to do it, I don't know, but when it comes right down to it, the city is not obligated to make this, this payment.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Mulholland?
Um, the last time that I'm aware of someone coming, um, with a sewer, uh, backup reimbursement request was when I was sitting in those seats at every city council meeting, I believe, and I, I, about three or four years ago. Um, and I, I understand that. Um, I'm sure you all understand my position being out $3,000. Right now has been, um, honestly quite difficult because I did have to put it on a credit card payment. I was not in a position at that time at all to, to pay that out of, um, our family's money. So I appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
All right, uh, Alderman Snow?
So, um, can I make a request of the administration to, um, and I realize it's going to take some time, um, to bring up the last three claims regarding sewer, um, backups barring flood, rain, flood issues?
Last three claims, the last three that came before the council?
Last three claims that came before the city council.
I don't know when the last claim, uh, came before the city council, or?
Alderman Mulholland's correct. It's been a while. We went through, we went through a bunch of them for two or three years. We had quite a few, and it's been a dry spell for, pardon the pun, it's been a dry spell for a while.
Well? Alderwoman, uh, Gramkowski?
Do you know what the resolution off the top of your head is for those claims? And just one other thought I'm thinking is if we do deny it, you would be able to seek counsel and, and see what, what remedy you could get that way personally?
So I, the, the last claim, like I said, was before I was elected, so at least three years ago now, and the council did pay it. And yes, I, if this was denied, I would be forced to take time and energy and money out then to hire a lawyer and have to do that. I really, really dread, dread doing that. My, it's, it's going to be very difficult for me to do that.
Well, I don't know what the last, uh, claim was. I wasn't here, probably. Um, I do know in the past, uh, the city has had individuals come to council meetings and, um, any of the ones that I have been involved with, um, the legal counsel, um, that was given, uh, was obviously adhered to, and there's a reason behind that. And I don't want to, uh, speak on every case, but I do think it's important. Uh, and I will, I will ask Mr. Anderson, uh, if he can shed a little bit of light on this because, you know, I know that we used to have, uh, an ordinance that said one thing. That ordinance was changed before, uh, that I wasn't even aware of here, but I know that ordinance had been changed by a previous city council, but it also, um, addressed, um, what needed to take place, uh, in order to define responsibility. Um, so I, I guess I, I would ask Mr. Anderson strictly about this case, if he can enlighten the council.
And before I start, I would like to caution, number one, each change of the ordinance is completely irrelevant to the city's legal standing in this matter. Whether or not it should be denied or approved, what the success would be if there was ever litigation over it. Um, and I'd also be careful, obviously, with facts as to what is discussed in an open session on something that may have been litigation that's been brought up this evening.
Well, strictly what the mayor's referring to is, is, um, in 2016, there was an ordinance amendment that was done that changed the maintenance responsibility for sanitary sewer service lines. Up until 2016, the property owner was responsible for the entire service line from the main connection, wherever that was at, in the right-of-way, all the way to the house. And in 2016, it was changed so that the property owner was responsible for the maintenance of the sewer service line from the, from, on their property only. So basically from the right-of-way into the building. So when that change was made, then the policy was, was established, uh, in Public Works that the property owner would be, who had the backup, would be required to provide us with, with visual evidence that shows that the, the, the issue is located in these, in the public right-of-way and not on the pro, on the private property, which in this case, um, we, we did finally get the video evidence, uh, and once we got that, then that determination was made and the necessary repairs were done. But that's what the mayor's referring to. And going back to the previous discussion, I believe that was a property owner on Church Street, if I remember correctly, that was the last one that was, uh, consideration by council.
Alderman Snow?
And again, if we could get the, generically speaking, try to dig up the last three claims that came before city council, um, with the, um, committee minutes and, um, the, uh, council results on those as well. Um, the other thing is, um, and if you don't mind me saying this, that we need to, generically, if this, as this moves forward, eliminate the, the actual title that her being an alderman, because in our- Cause in our case, I'm assuming we're going to make a decision based on her being a constituent, not an alderperson. So just thought, just throw that out there that might want to eliminate that titleage on there. And then I guess at this point, in order to keep it moving, I would, under the premise of moving this forward and actually having a vote, but waiting for that information, make a motion and then table it until we get that information and then bring it off the table to make a decision at that point. So I'll make the motion to pay the bills as presented from Natalie Moho for the sewer backup at 120 West Boone Street.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor then to pay the backup as presented, which is $2,851.24. I believe I got that right. And is there a second? Okay. Hearing none, the motion dies. All right. Moving to item C in your packet. You have a memo from Director Anderson, Public Works Director Anderson dated June 5th of 2024, that being a sanitary sewer manhole lining. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. These next three items that we'll be discussing are basically similar in nature. But we have several brick sanitary sewer manholes, the older manholes in town. We have identified 10 of those that at this point can be saved by, repaired by lining instead of having to remove and replace them. We have received three proposals to do that lining work. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Advanced Rehabilitation Technology to complete the lining of 10 sanitary sewer manholes at a cost of $41,237.75. This work will be paid for from sewer depreciation line item 61-1790.
All right. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow in a second, please. Second by Alderwoman Grahamkowski, thank you both. So we have, which is the low bidder, Advanced Rehabilitation Technology. Is there any questions regarding the motion on the floor?
Your Honor.
Alderman Snow.
So it appears that we have several lining things. So could you give us a, a brief understanding of exactly what that really means to the lay people? Cause I don't have a clue at this point.
So for the manholes, on the manholes, it's a spray lining system where they'll go in and, and then put a coat and it's usually a series of coats they put on there and it basically creates, for lack of better, like a fiberglass, a thick fiberglass lining, basically creating a new manhole. And that secures it, that, that eliminates the infiltration and extends the life. And that way, again, we don't have to dig it up. And these are deeper, larger manhole structures that, that would take quite a bit to replace if we had to replace them. And we can line them now and they'll give us many more years of useful life.
And if you, what about for the areas that have moisture already in them? Some of your, it sounds like, based on some of the stuff that could be the case in some of your sewer lines, what, what do they do for that? Curious.
Again, those with the spray lining and stuff, that takes care of all that. And it can be done. Yep.
I had the same questions and Director Anderson and I had the same discussion. Actually, some of the old, in this case, the sewer manhole linings, he had explained to me were brick and that they had, as everybody knows, brick eventually crumbles. And I thought it was amazing that they could go ahead and fortify these and get a lot more years rather than digging them up very much, very, a lot more expensive it would be. And very impressive with the technology. So I think this is our best bet. And if there's any other questions regarding, do we have motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. Any other questions? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. Can we, I understand we're going to coat these bricks. These bricks are already in a state of decay. And will they not decay from the backside towards the installation of this fiberglass?
They will, but it's, it's structurally hard and sound, so it's like creating a new manhole within itself. So the bricks could continue to deteriorate and it would still hold up.
And it wouldn't be more economical to put a sleeve in there of some type instead of fiberglassing the brick?
No, this, this type of lining is, is the most economical for us to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor. If there are no other questions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we're going to item D, which is again, consistence with what we talked about, that being sanitary sewer main lining. So Director Anderson, again.
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, we have sections of agent sanitary sewer main line totaling 470 lineal feet that need to be repaired due to the depth and location of these lines. It'll be more economical to have them lined than replaced. We've received three proposals to do this work. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Innovative Underground to complete the lining of 470 lineal feet of agent sanitary sewer main for a total cost of $39,950. This work will be paid for from sewer depreciation line item number 61-1790. This one's a little bit different. It's like a sock material. It's a little lining that they put in through, from manhole to manhole basically for these mainline sections. And once it's in, then there's a reactive agent that's put into the line and then it, it basically expands and conforms to the pipe, creating a new pipe inside the old pipe. Then once it's cured out, then they come back in with technology and they cut out the service, all your lateral service lines that connect to that mainline. They go back through and cut all those, all of those out at that time.
Thank you, Director. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. In a second by Alderman Albertini, thank you both. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? Again, this is the low bidder, not by a lot, but it is a low bid. Hearing no other questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And in your packet again, we have a memo from Director Anderson dated 6/4, that being sanitary sewer service lining. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, we have two six inch sanitary sewer service lines from the sidewalk cleanout to the sanitary main that need to be repaired due to the depth of each of these lines. Again, lining is, is a good alternative. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Innovative Underground to complete the lining of two sanitary sewer services, a total of 55 lineal feet at a cost of $13,750. This work will be paid for from sewer collection line item 61-5836,000. And these, these lining projects, as we go forward on an annual basis, you're probably going to be seeing more of these as, as, as we get to in the rehabilitation of the system as the system continues to age.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman McGee, thank you both. Uh, any questions, any comments? I think we get the, we've got the same thing here, just a little bit different fix. If there are no other questions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed. And moving on, item F, 4F, in your packet again, is a wastewater treatment plant facility plan. A memo from Director Anderson dated 6/4. Director Anderson?
In your packet, an updated facility planning report for capital improvements at our wastewater treatment plant is required in order to be eligible for the water pollution control loan program administered by the IEP. In addition, the updated facility planning report will satisfy special condition 22 of our MPDS permit to extend the effluent phosphorus compliance date to December 31st, 2035. Currently, that date, due date is 2030, so we get a five year extension. Attached to this memo is a proposal from Baxter and Woodman to complete this work. I would recommend approval of the engineering services work order from Baxter and Woodman in an amount not to exceed $46,000 to complete the WWTP facility planning report. This work will be paid for from the sewer department depreciation line item 61-1790.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, thank you. And a second. Second by Alderman Snow, thank you both. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Brent, how do they, I have a question. How do they treat phosphorus then? How, how is that?
Uh, we've had a phosphorus alternative study done. You can do it chemically, you can do it biologically. We're part of the Rock River Watershed Group that collectively will come up with some proposed standards for what our phosphorus limit should be for, for the rock and the Kishawaki tributary to the rock for our area. And once that's determined, approved from the EPA, then we'll know what our limits are that we have to attain and that will then allow us to go forward with whatever method is going to be the most economical for us to do that.
Alderman Snow?
This kind of backs up just a hair bit. This backs up a hair bit on the funding for paying for these items. I noticed like on some of the sewer linings, you went from the depreciation line item and then the other one, you went from a different line item. Is there any rationale in that?
Uh, I did the, I did the service line look out of our O and M budget because it's just for the individual services. So that would become out of my, my, my annual budget for O and M for that, those kind of repairs. But the other ones were more mainline, so for depreciation for actually the, the collection system itself, not necessar, necessarily the service lines.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Moving on, item G, which is another memo in your packet from Mr. Anderson. He's been busy. Wastewater Treatment Plant SCADA System Operations Software. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, wastewater treatment plant continues to implement SCADA, which is our supervisory control and data acquisition system to monitor plant operations. Our current budget includes $100,000 for additional SCADA work. Attached to this memo is a proposal from Aquatics Informatics for a real water operations and compliance software program to store, monitor and analyze the data now being collected. The annual cost of software is $5,600. Installation and startup cost is $11,060. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Aquatics Informatics in the amount of $16,660 for the purchase and installation of real water operations and compliance software for the WWTP SCADA system. This work will be paid for from sanitary sewer connection fees. And on the second page is a little memo from our licensed operator, Nick Steiner, regarding the benefits of what this software program will do for us.
Okay, thank you. And with that being said, could I have a motion regarding the SCADA system as mentioned? Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you both. Any questions, further questions regarding the SCADA for Mr. Anderson? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item H, in your packet again, a memo dated 6/5 of 24 from Director Anderson regarding Genoa Road Improvement Project and Preliminary Engineering. On that project and the costs associated, Director Anderson?
Memo in your packet, we've received a Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund grant in the amount of $150,000 for Genoa Road improvements. Those improvements were identified in the completed lane study in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement with the county for the jurisdictional transfer of Genoa Road from US Route 20 to the I-90 tollway. Attached to this memo is proposal from CES in the amount of $8,050 to complete the preliminary engineering for the Genoa Road improvements, including pavement overlay, striping, roadway lighting, sidewalks and construction cost estimate. The preliminary engineering will be used to complete the application for the state grant. The county has already approved this process as well. I would recommend, or at least the county committee has approved this process and it will be going to full county board. I would recommend approval of the proposal from CES in the amount of $8,050 to complete the preliminary engineering for the Genoa Road Improvement Project. This work will be split with the county and the city share of $4,025 will be paid for from line item 0153606140.
All right. Motion by Alderman Snow, thank you. Second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we have item I, which is MFT overlays, a bid tabulation in your packet. Are the bid tabulation regarding the MFT overlays in a memo from Director Anderson dated 6/4? Director Anderson?
Memo in your packet, we received two bids for our overlay program for this year. Low bid of was $514,757.55. I would recommend approval of that bid from Rock Road Companies for our 2024 MFT street overlay program, subject to I.DOT approval. This work will be paid for from MFT funds.
Okay. If I could, I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Grahamkowski, thank you. And a second. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor?
Your Honor.
Alderman Snow?
So are there, should there be more people willing to bid on this? Or is this just the people that are local enough that want to participate?
These are probably the local ones that are large enough firms to be able to do this work.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's anybody against? Okay, motion passed, thank you. In your packet again, a memo from Director Anderson dated 6/4 of 24 regarding 2024 MFT thermoplastic pavement, pavements, striping, bid tabulations. Director Anderson?
Memo in your packet, we received two bids for our 2024 thermoplastic pavement striping contract, which is to stripe the newly overlaid streets you just approved that have striping on them. The low bid being from Countryman Incorporated, $9,412.75. I would recommend approval of that bid for the 2024 MFT thermoplastic pavement striping project, subject to I.DOT approval. Again, this work will be paid for from MFT funds.
Okay. Thank you. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Albertini, thank you. And a second. Second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions regarding the bids and the motion on the floor regarding those bids? Alderman Birinton?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick question. Is the, so is the thermoplastic something relatively newer that replaced just regular paint or have we been doing this a while?
The thermoplastic we've used for, for a long time. We only use that or it's, it's best used on new pavement. The adherence to new pavement is really good. The adherence of thermoplastic on old pavement is not so good where it peels up and stuff. So that's what we spec for our new overlays and stuff.
Yes, I'm familiar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We have a motion then on the floor. If there's no other questions? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we'll move to the last item on the agenda, that being under other, item A, Belvedere Park District Glen Green Annexation Agreement. City Attorney has drafted a letter in your packet dated 6/6 of 24 regarding the Belvedere Park District Glen Green Annexation that we have been trying to, we have been working with the park district regarding how to annex that property, which leads to other things, hopefully, in our future. But City Attorney?
So as we've discussed before, been trying to close the gap to bring the city contiguous or next to the Deer Hills developments. You know, pursuing multiple paths to do that. One way to do it is to, with the park districts gracious.
help, annex the Glen Green Park at Distillery Road and State Street. That would allow us to hopefully then perhaps annex some property immediately north of that, on the other side of State Street. Allow us to become contiguous to the Deer Hills properties. So this is one step in the process of closing that gap. Knowing that we'd approached the park district, we've mentioned this to the council before, about annexing that park to the city and to assist the city in that manner. So in your packets was an annexation agreement, we do everything by agreement, that would provide for several different things, one of which is the annexation of the property. Obviously, because the park district is assisting the city and they are just another government land just like us with the same tax base, basically. The goal is to make this as easy for the park district as possible, allowing them to continue their operations as they exist now. So things like paving, parking lots, and things like that, we would not be requiring because quite frankly, it works where they're at now. We did accede to some requests for some assistance on repairing some, some water lines and things like that. And also to assist with providing water to both that park as well as Sunstrand Park. So that agreement's in your packets. The recommendation would be for two motions. The first motion would be to approve the annexation agreement between the City of Belvidere and the Belvidere Township Park District with respect to the Glen Green Park. Then the second motion, a separate motion, would be a motion to annex the territory of the Glen Green Park. Both of those would come back in ordinance form.
Okay, with that being said, could I, I would entertain a motion then first to approve the annexation agreement between the City of Belvidere and the Belvidere Township Park District relating to the Glen Green Park located at Distillery Road and Business US Route 20. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Mohold, thank you both. We have been, as the city attorney said, we have been trying to make certain property that is going to expire, a pre-annexation agreement is going to expire soon.
In about one year.
In about one year. And of course, when that, it's 20 years, that time has passed when that was signed. We are running out of options. And I think this puts on the table at least this option to make that property contiguous with the city and for our ability to bring them any of the other development that has a pre-annexation right now. But I think Alderman Stevens had mentioned a few times about why do subdivisions enjoy certain city services and yet don't pay any taxes? So we want to bring them in and this will be, allow us to close that loop. So Alderman Snow?
So in the package, it looks like there's two parcels that we pulled up.
No, it's all park district. And it is two parcels.
Yeah.
That threw me for a loop the first time I saw it also.
Okay. Any other question? Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Hearing no other comments. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And then we also have item two, be a motion to annex the territory consisting of Glen Green Park located at Distillery Road and Business US Route 20. Motion by Alderman Snow in a second, please. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you both. Again, these go hand in hand. And I hope we're successful. All right, any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And that is all we have on our agenda for this evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderwoman Grahamkowski and a second by Alderman Albertini. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? All right, thank you. For the record, we adjourned at 7:12 PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.